First thing on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Visitor's comments? Devin?
I'm just looking to get two roads acknowledged. So they are private roads and they just need to be acknowledged by the selectmen and forwarded to Ryan and Jen, the assessors, so that we can get them on the maps.
Okay, I was under the understanding that this was being taken care of by Kevin Landine for state, like for emergency response purposes?
Yep, so...
And that we reached out to town council? And there's nothing that we need to do?
So Ryan told me, and the assessor's office told me, which is it goes through Landine and the building inspector talked about it.
Right.
The building inspector assigned the numbers to the homes. So that's already done. And he sends it back to the assessor's office to get on the maps.
Okay.
But without the town acknowledging that they are private roads and going through the clerk's office as well to acknowledge that they're private roads and get them basically written down on our charts, we can't move any further. So Ryan is also waiting...
By our charts, do you mean like the town's?
Like Ryan's files, yeah. Getting it down on files.
The assessor's maps and etcetera.
Yeah.
Okay, so what?
So I, you know, Devin reached out to me and just said that, you know, she wanted these accepted and...
I didn't say accepted.
Acknowledged, acknowledged.
Yeah, there's a difference between that.
No, I saw the emails. I was included on the emails. I saw, I saw them.
So I reached out to town council because I know, because in my, you know, my history, my experience in this is private neighborhoods, private roads. You know, in my last town, there was a giant mobile home park. And on our, on our assessor's cards, it just looks like one big parcel. There's no roads, there's no homes, there's no nothing. And so, you know, thinking that's the way it's supposed to be. I reached out to town council and they said, "There's absolutely nothing that you need to do." They didn't, you know, know anything about it. I said that they, they claimed the Dover Amendment, so we had no jurisdiction over it. And the attorney flat out said, "I didn't say that, you know, that the Dover Amendment applied here." So, but it's all built and it's all done.
I think it's, there's a little confusion with the Dover Amendment there and what we're...
So anyway, so we didn't have any, you know, we, as far as we know, we don't even know what's going on up there. I mean, the building inspector does, but, you know, the town doesn't. And there is absolutely no reason that the town needs to acknowledge a private road. It's not going to be on our maps. It's not going to be on anywhere, really, because it's...
So how, if it's not on our maps, then how does E-911 get there?
Hold on, I have a question. Does it, does it do any harm to just acknowledge that they exist?
I'm sure it doesn't do any, you can acknowledge they exist. Whether we pay our surveyor to go out and put them on our maps is another story.
I already gave Jen, the assessor, all our maps and basically all our stuff.
So I, does that, you know, you, the town isn't going to accept a private person's...
No, we're not accepting anything.
Well, I, I mean, I mean the surveys and things like that, like, right?
No, right, I don't...
We don't have to do anything, right?
We don't have to do anything, no, right. But just acknowledging them so that you can move on with what you need to do.
Yeah.
I would so move.
We do have forms from previous years of the Board of Selectmen and the clerk's office acknowledging private roads.
I recall doing this in the past. So I, I do recall doing it.
So Ryan is just waiting so that we can update it? Because also, it's faculty housing. So it is people living in there, which would then get census and everything else mailed to them technically. Just like in our dorms, they get all that mailed to them for the residential counselors that are town residents in those dorms.
Yes.
Can I ask what the names of these roads are?
The Loop Road going all around campus, which Landine wanted us to name is Pioneer Path. And then the Faculty Village, which again, Landine wanted us to name, and same with the building inspector, is Gracias Way.
Gracias, like?
It's a donor for the...
Yeah, okay. Just thinking, sorry, I heard you correctly.
Thank you.
I have them written down if you want.
I don't need them. I just, if, if there's no harm in doing them, you know, to be good neighbors, I, I don't have an issue with accepting, you know, acknowledging, rather. Acknowledging that they exist.
At this point, we can't put them on E-911 if they're not anywhere on the town's map. So there's no, you know, there's no way that they're going to get there or find out where they are because it's not coming up anywhere.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I move that we...
Yeah, we had a motion on the floor.
That we acknowledge.
I need a second.
All right, I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we've acknowledged that they exist for you.
Okay, and I will call up and then email to you and the town clerk so that Ryan knows the next steps that he can take.
Yeah.
Basically, this isn't going to cost the town anything, correct?
This is not costing town anything. And that's the difference between accepting a road and acknowledging a road. Because if they accepted it...
Then we have to maintain it.
Then now we'd be maintaining it.
Correct.
This is just acknowledging, basically, that it's there. We have our own engineers, we have our own surveys for building specs and all that, which the building department does have.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And everything else. So like, it's kind of two different things there.
Okay.
That's all.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other visitor comments? Whoa, sorry, guys.
That's all right.
Jeez, a wild penny on my hand here. All right, so, um, we can go into it. We can't go in early, but we can go in late. So I apologize for keeping you waiting. For a swipe to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12, the board, the select board will hold a public hearing on May 20th, 2024, at 6:30 PM Municipal Office Building, 307 Main Street, Gilbertville, Massachusetts, on an application for multiple amendments, change of stock interest, and change of manager for Last Town Brewing Company located at 483 Main Street, Gilbertville. Copy of the application has been available at the town administrator's office at the Municipal Office Building, 307 Main Street in Gilbertville. So the hearing is now open.
Kelly, could I just, when somebody talks, just ask them to come up? Because for the minute, she's having a hard time.
Yeah.
So you come up, say who they are, like, she's not going to know who Devin was.
And now it's who you are, where you're from, and just so that the, the recording is picking it up.
Sure. Is it just verbal or is there...
You can, or you just sit up front so that it's...
Oh, just sit right there?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm Pam Sporel, and I'm with Last Town's Brewing.
You're fine. It revolves, everything revolves around, yep. So you're changing manager and change of stock interest?
Right, it's, it's the proportion. So it is now, it's now, it's now a woman, it's now a women, a woman-owned business majority. We'd had a third stockholder who had been our brewer, and he stepped away from the business. Family commitments, health issue kind of things. And so he stepped away from the business, and so we bought back his stock. And it's been reallocated to myself. He was holding the pour license at the time, so I'm also...
You're new to manager.
Right, so I'm taking that over as well.
And here is the folder, if anybody would like to look. I have everything that I'm submitting to the...
All the I's and T's and everything.
Yes, I got it all. And so you would just need to sign the license authority certification.
Okay. If you so chose. I don't have any issues. Does everybody have any questions or concerns or anything?
Nope.
Anyone from the audience have any concerns? Speak up now. Okay. I close the hearing first, correct? Before we vote? Okay. I will now close the public hearing. 6:41.
And I move that we grant the petition. I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is Alex, that's with me, who's my current brewer.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Good to meet you as well.
He's been brewing with us for over two and a half years. And he went and got certified out in Chicago. And has his brewer certification. Certificat... Yeah, certification. So, yeah, it's issued by Siegel, they're an organization out of Germany.
Nice.
Yeah. But we thank you very much.
I'll be in touch with you.
All right, great, thank you.
All right, and this is sewer abatements.
Yep, there's two abatements here. Both are vacant properties. The Soltes is the hairdresser. So her daughter brought that in. And then Douglas and Maria Taylor heard from their neighbors or somebody that if they had a vacant property, they're remodeling it right now. So that's why it's vacant. So they understand that they will be renting it out and that the town, the select board, are not, you know, real big proponents of just having vacant properties to have vacant properties. So they will be, they will be renting it out when it's, when it's all renovated. The salon is now closed. She passed away.
Ooh, up here?
Yep.
No, not, not, no.
Well, I don't know, she said it was salon, and I thought it was really salon.
Yeah, it's...
Couldn't be salon.
No, because it's...
Hold on.
Yeah, it's called beans.
It's not the, it's not the right name, too. Linda Soltes was a guy, so I don't remember who she was.
And Shelley's on it.
Yes.
And they submitted, both of these applicants submitted everything that they were supposed to, which is right here, too, if anybody wants to see it. And so if you move to approve these abatements, you'll need three signatures on each page.
The amount, what's on them? The 96469 and the 85733?
Yes, that's right.
Motion?
I want a motion to what? For the sewer abatement?
To approve the sewer abatements.
Make a motion to approve the sewer abatements? Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closing the annual town meeting warrant.
You need a motion for that?
Yeah, we're going to go through it?
Yeah, we'll discuss it.
Well, there's no other, there were no other submissions. It's now closed, so, I mean, yeah, the, the deadline has passed.
Right.
So there's no, no way to add anything else. The only change that I will say, Ryan and I have been going through this constantly, is the revolving fund for the Board of Health not to exceed 10,000, but it should be not to exceed 20,000. Because that's how they were going to fund their department now, is through...
So you're going to change the cap to 20?
I'm going to change it to 20. Well, I'm proposing that the board changes it to 20.
Thank you.
So everything is pretty much standard. That is on every year, all the articles. There is a citizen's petition. Sorry, favor.
You know what? Do you have, I...
Did you like getting this?
Did you, what about, I sent you earlier today. Did you get that one?
What's in the trade of fines?
Any last-minute changes?
No, but the, the budget is being talked about by the finance committee, so that...
You're looking for a hard copy?
Here we go, here we go, here we go, here we go. Warrant? Is it in the packet?
It is, it's right in the packet that I sent today. I sent a new one with everything in there, yeah.
Okay, here it is.
Okay. So all of the articles up to Article 14 are the standard articles?
Standard, oh, thank you. Here's your abatements.
Oh, thank you. Article 15 is new. It's a citizen's petition to take $8,000 from somewhere and give it to the Gilbertville Library for Salary Line. And we received a legal opinion that I forwarded you that is, you know, it's frowned upon to fund any pri... Well, it's actually illegal to fund private industry or private businesses. But this, considering it's a public library and it's open to the public, it's for free. There's a few of the requirements that they do not meet. They don't submit their financials to us. They don't circulate with other libraries. So there's a few things, but this is citizen's petition, so it will be on the floor.
Right.
And we, my point, well, we've been through this, remember? Before. But there's no way to know who their direct, how their directors are chosen. There's no election. So it just seems, again, continues to seem wrong to me.
Right, I, I don't disagree. But what I will say is that if it goes to vote, we need to be prepared to fund it from something.
Oh, yeah, it'll go, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm still waiting when, when I ask for, you know, some Mass General Law where it's not legal. I mean, because even, you know, I made the, our seasonal employees have to pay into retirement. They have to pay into OPEC.
Right.
So why we just give it to them and they do whatever they want with it? I think that's where the legality gets hooked up.
Unfortunately, it's been done for years.
Right, and, but then it was stopped because of an audit. And audit was done and they said to not do that anymore. So they cut the funding for the salary. But they continue to fund the operating budget.
Yeah.
As we still do.
Correct, correct. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's good practice.
Yeah.
But if it goes to a vote, again...
It'll probably fly.
We need to be able to fund it. Yeah, that's my comment on that.
I'll speak against it, but I'm also chair of the trustees. The last time we did this, I got accused of having an affair with Sonia Klip.
Right, yeah, okay.
Just wanted to know that didn't happen.
So Article 16 is basically cleaning up the capital, capital planning committee. There's somebody on there from the school committee, and they didn't think that was as appropriate as putting somebody on there from the planning board. So they're removing a school committee member and taking them from...
They're, they're not.
No, um...
Because the school, it's so...
Oh, sorry, it's, it's, he was supposed, Ryan was supposed to fix this.
Okay.
And he didn't.
Is Ryan here?
No, oh, it might be in here. I have a, it might, this is the original that you have to sign, so it might be in here.
Yeah, one member of the school committee, we decided today should be...
But it's still...
Yeah, it's, it's here. I'll, I'll just, wait, it's here.
Right.
And just like I suggested at the meeting today, let's just leave it for now. But no, anyway.
Yeah, so the committee voted to bring it to the board to change from school committee to planning board. So it'll say, "The committee shall consist of seven members, which shall be comprised of one member of the select board, one member of the finance committee, one member of the planning board, one member of the Board of Assessors, one at-large member representing the town's people. The town treasurer is a non-voting member. The town administrator is a non-voting member. The quorum shall consist of a majority of the voting members." So it did just change just the planning board. If you want to do that, again, it's your call. It's their recommendation.
And I think we should take a vote on that.
So I will just say the capital planning, if you don't mind me giving a little explanation. Obviously, you're here, you can too. They just thought, you know, with capital going on, they're, to have the school here, just because they represent 50% of the budget doesn't mean that they're going to help represent the capital needs of the town. So planning, since they are involved in all of, you know, zoning and, you know, any kind of, if they're going to, anything, anything happening, changing ones to twos, changing, you know, the planning board typically knows about all of the development and things like that. So that's why they thought that that would be more appropriate, that's all. That's what they...
Some of us feel that with school committee members from towns actually working to change the way the school does it. The school is not monolithic. The school does a lot of things that it wants to do and could change. All sorts of things to save money. But, you know, it's kind of like a done deal and they'll never vote for that and everything. So I'm, I've been kind of against that. But if we decide to put it that way, the way Nicole just read, we should probably vote on it to have it in the minutes that we did so. Because what we're doing is changing the layout, which comes to us from a town meeting in the past.
Correct, correct.
So...
So I have a motion to vote on this?
I would make that motion. I don't mean to step all over you.
You don't know, you, you can make the motion. Go ahead.
Do you want a second?
I'll second it. Well, it's a native, has he? Well, yeah, I move that we use Ryan's new language. I second.
Okay, any discussion, other discussion?
Just more complaints.
And then I, oh, I'm so sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we're putting that on, that's going to stay on the warrant?
It's going to stay on the warrant the way it was read.
Correct, okay. And then Article 17 is so, it's allowing the moderator to use handheld electronic devices, secret ballot, or other means to make and tally votes. And that was by citizen's petition as well.
Okay.
I mean, you can also do a standing vote. Well, that's not a secret vote. Well, does that have to be secret?
Well, that's what, that's what this is trying to assure that to do.
This is what this is trying to accomplish.
Some people can vote the way they want.
It's up to the moderator to call whether it's going to be a secret ballot or not. But if it's going to be a secret ballot, there's a lot of logistics to go through.
To go into that, yeah.
So this tries to smooth that out.
Yeah.
Last time I went through this, there was a lot of standing ballot, standing voting stuff, which I thought was outrageously unfair. But that's just me.
Well, it doesn't keep it secret, if that's the purpose.
Campbell had us facing each other so everybody could see each other.
Oh, good. So are we good with this one? Do you want to...
I am.
Everybody okay with this? Okay.
And then there's one more article, and that's Article 18, and that was submitted by Bill. Pretty much, I believe, it's kind of redundant because this is already required. But Bill, if you want to explain it?
Yep. In the existing bylaw, there's a clause that says an additional 45 days after approval. And, and basically, I'm taking that language out and we just follow the open meeting law. And I put in a requirement that everybody does a training that's available. The open meeting law training, conflict of interest training, and the record keeping. And basically, it's, it's worded so the board itself, or committee, or subcommittee, once they approve the meeting minutes, they, they put it to whatever town website we use that's approved. And, and then they send a copy to Ryan, so Ryan doesn't have to do all this. Or Nicole for that part.
So everybody does have to take open meeting law training, that's for sure.
Yeah, and they also have to take conflict of interest training.
Yeah, everybody has to do that, and...
That's, that's part of it, yeah.
So...
I mean, it, it just clears it up. I mean, if you, um...
Does this change, you've changed the number of days?
I, no, it follows the Mass General laws, which are three weeks.
You took out the existing days that are in our bylaws currently.
So I'll give you an example. If, if we have a board that meets once a month, and let's say the first meeting is in January, they have their meeting, by the third meeting, they're allowed to approve January's meeting. So you're talking March. And then we have a town bylaw that allows another 45 days on top of that for it to be posted. So you're talking mid-May for a January meeting. So where's the transparency? Like, if somebody wanted to know what's going on in this board, they don't know. So it just, I say we follow the Mass General law on open meeting and make it, you know, transparent. Just make it more upfront. People want to know what's going on, they can, they can find out.
Can I ask a question, Devin?
Hmm?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, so if you're, so what are you saying now? If, if they have a meeting in January and they only meet once a month, when do they have to have their minutes in, by?
Technically, March, according to Mass General law. They have three meetings, by the third meeting...
So you're just trying to get rid of the extra 45 days? That's it?
Pretty much, yeah.
Because you gave me originally, you gave it the new one, and I was like, I was hoping you were going to redline it because I, I'm not going to go through it the whole time.
Well, I, I gave you the existing bylaw.
Right.
And it, and it, and then I gave you the, the new version that I wrote up.
Yes, exactly, but what I meant was this, you know, it was today and it was too late for me to sit and go through both to see exactly what was changed.
Right, and...
I just, I don't know, Ryan kind of thought it wasn't necessary.
I can show you where it's required by the law.
Right.
Like, you know what I mean? It's in here, he's saying training's not required. Training is required. Training's a big thing. And it, like, so how do you know if you're doing something right if you're not school or having an idea of what you're supposed to be doing?
Well, we have to take the training for open meeting and conflict of interest regularly. I mean, every, I've done it, it doesn't...
Yeah.
So I don't know about record-keeping training.
Okay.
Is that what you're talking about here with the minutes?
To some degree, yeah, because it goes to Ryan, the clerk, after they're approved.
So he has to take record training.
Yeah, but he's, he's a certified clerk.
Do I have to take record-keeping?
No, you, you don't. You just have to do open meeting law and conflict of interest.
So I have to do that anyway?
Right.
Okay, so, and I just want to be clear, because sometimes, because I just took minutes today. So, so we're at a trustee's meeting of the library. And we go through what happened. Now, the minutes are voted on ideally at the next meeting. But if something happens, then we have two more meetings to vote on those minutes of January. We have till the March meeting.
Correct.
It's January, February would be a month, February, March would be two months. Three months. We meet on the first Thursday of the month. So we meet the first Thursday in January. And we have minutes of that meeting to look at the first Thursday of February. And if there's a question or something, we have to put it off. We don't make a quorum or whatever. Then we go to the first Thursday of March. And that's the drop-dead date?
Yeah, being compliant, yeah. You have three meetings.
I have three meetings, the minutes come out of the first meeting.
Right.
You can't vote on the minutes of a meeting.
No, I get that, but you, you have a whole month, right? And you have it within that month.
Before, before you generate a meeting?
Or a meeting minutes, right? To discuss at the next meeting.
It has to be discussed at the second meeting.
Right.
But the first meeting, you can't do anything?
No, no.
Because you're making...
Right. So basically, it says after it's approved. In our town bylaws, it says after it's approved by, you know, the meeting, whatever board, okay? You get 45 days on top of that to post it. And, and basically, you're granting, okay, 45 days. You're talking another month and a half on a board that, say, meets once a month.
Well, as far as the posting goes, pretty much it happens quick when it's voted on. And just, and you say that this three, I'm just wondering if the three meetings are being counted correctly? I just, and you say that this three, I'm just wondering if the three meetings are being counted correctly? Because something, that could seem sudden. Well, I don't wanna go to town council for everything.
Right. No, I mean, you can actually, the, well, you can send an email to the Attorney General and ask them for clarification if you like.
So if you have a meeting in which you take minutes, do you have three meetings from that meeting? I see where you're going with this.
Well, you can't vote on the minutes tonight of the meeting tonight.
Correct.
And, I don't know if it's fair to make people, well, you can't deliberate on it until the next meeting. So you can't go over the minutes until that second meeting.
Right.
And then, then easily, there could be, you know, we don't have a quote on that yet, so we don't know how to do with that, and that makes it, you're up against the wall on that last meeting.
Or is it three meetings after the meeting in which the minutes were taken?
Well-
Right. Regardless, I, I mean, I-
I mean, what I'm suggesting is the forty-five days, removal of the forty-five days. And, and basically, I, I changed the language as far as the approved town website, which, you know, because, let's say, down the road, we vote to approve a certain website for all our local government broadcasts, you know, publishing. We don't have to change the bylaws, it's the way, you know what I mean? It's still in here, it's the approved by the board.
Whatever's approved at that time.
Yes, right. Instead of listing the actual website or the, the address. So right now, it's like mytowngov slash zero one zero three one dot org, or town at Hardwick.
That's not the official posting, but that's, Julie posts everything on there. But the official posting is mytowngov, because we don't have a full-time clerk to be able to be available to stamp agendas.
Yeah.
A lot of towns use it. And I just, I'll just follow up with the clerk, says that this is unnecessary. So if you wanna go by what the clerk says, who is the keeper of records, I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, he, just, he made reference that it's, it's not required by law. And, right in here, it is required. And this is a document, a guide for members of public boards and commissions.
Well, either way, if we're gonna put it on, I guess I'll just take a motion to accept it into the warrant.
I make a motion that we add this to the warrant.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
I think it's unnecessary. I worry about breaking the law all the time, or being accused of it. So...
Just transparency, nothing wrong with it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. opposed?
Yeah, I think it's redundant. Well, I have it for you to sign then. Sandy always has to sign here, but I took them off. Do you want just this, or you want the whole thing?
No, just the signature, that's good.
What's going on there?
Oh, it's stapled, but then you had a paperclip, some, some of it was stapled.
It's still stapled. Is this the one, is this okay?
Do you have to sign all of these?
No.
You just have to sign one?
Yeah.
Oh, I have so many copies.
How many copies do you have?
I have, and I feel like this isn't on-
I need four to post.
I have, um, six. Plus the original.
And this is what he gave you?
Oh, maybe he was, I'm sorry, guys, this is the one he wants you to sign.
Yeah, so the heavy paper, that's what I was looking for.
These were just copies for you, sorry. Sorry, sorry. So you don't need to sign that bill, 'cause you can sign again.
You just practice, you can practice.
There you go.
This is the fancy paper, it's heavy. That's what I was, that's what I was feeling for when you handed me the paper.
Oh, okay, thanks.
This doesn't feel like that-
Ryan just handed this to me when I was at the Packer meeting, I'm like, what does this, okay, now I see.
Okay, so here's that for him. Okay, so, um, I mean, we went through the warrant, but we're gonna have to go through everything with FinCon.
All the money.
Right, and the wheres and the whats. I assume, they'll come in when they're ready, or?
No, I can go get them. Do you wanna, um-
Or we can go through a few more things, and then, yeah, yeah. Intermunicipal agreement? I know, I don't know how late this is, Scott. Intermunicipal agreement with Rutland? Who am I here?
Oh, yes, um, so, I don't know if you recall, a few months back, the Westbrook Field ambulance was, went to a call, and they were coming back, and a tree fell right here on Main Street, I actually saw it happen, and destroyed their ambulance. So while they're waiting for another one, because obviously, they're not just to get ready for everybody to take, they can borrow one from Rutland. And KP Law wrote the intermunicipal agreement, and Rutland agreed with it. So you just have to sign it, and then Rutland will sign it, and, and they'll be able to borrow the bus. So I did give you the letter from Dan McCall today. So it just explains that they're gonna be, you know, just borrowing it.
Is that in your packet?
Yeah, yep, it's got an insurance binder, and then there's the intermunicipal agreement that, again, David Jenkins wrote up, so.
I don't have any interest with this.
No, I, I mean, it's great, it's a great thing.
You just, you'll just vote to prefer to sign it?
I move that we, that we sign this agreement. I second that.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And accepting the Memorial Day schedule that Ryan sent us earlier, or last week, I think he sent us the schedule. If everyone's okay with that, we'll just take a, take a vote to accept the goings-on.
I move that we accept the proposed approval, proposed festivities. I'll separate it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Festivities, it's a poignant day.
Approval of the May sixth meeting minutes? Does anybody review them? Any issues?
I'm gonna accept the minutes from May sixth. I second the motion.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. More scholarship, any essays?
No, and I reached out to Superintendent Muha today, and she assured me that she was going to get back to me, she was gonna reach out to guidance, but I, I hadn't heard back, so I don't know. But Pathfinder, I sent you the email that they, their seniors are-
Nope.
And, and so, I also said, you might want to just give the scholarships to the school and let them decide who gets them at the end of the year? Or you can say, not this year, I guess.
Not this year.
Yeah, I think I, I just assumed get essays and review them, and-
Okay.
And we can certainly, just, how does anyone feel about putting it out there that we would take them at our next meeting, see if a little extension can prompt progress?
Yeah.
I mean-
Yep, and reach out to the school and, or the guidance and say-
Well, that's what she's been doing.
Yeah.
But yeah, just put it back in their lap that they can have until the next meeting. And if we don't get them by there, I guess we just keep investing the money.
Money will pile up.
I, I mean, I didn't know it would be so hard to give away money.
The superintendent's name is Muha?
Yes.
And I see we have some, um, uh-
Committee reports.
Committee reports.
Yeah.
Any other signatures?
Yeah, one signature. I did want to just go through the miscellaneous correspondence, if that's all right. I got an email from, it's in your packet, I got an email from Eileen Leahy at Comcast regarding, um, funding that's, you know, winds down through the end of the year, but Comcast is offering fourteen dollar credit to all customers. Comcast now offers affordable prepaid internet. So there's, there are different packages that are available to people. They just need to contact Comcast if they feel that they would be eligible for any of these programs, and, and try to get into one of them. They have to call Comcast. And then Solitude Lake Management will be on Hardwick Pond on May thirtieth, conducting treatment using sonar genesis. And there will be no swimming until May thirty-first, no livestock watering until May thirty-first, no drinking until May thirty-first, and no irrigation until August fourteenth.
That's been an ongoing project for now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And then, the only thing to sign is the certificate of appreciation that you had asked for at the last meeting for Frederick and Jane DeBross.
Oh.
Okay.
Perfect, yeah, good.
And I will go get the finance.
She was born and raised in Illinois. She's a French boy. You had to jump around?
Yeah, that's the only, that's the downfall, that's what I was saying to you the other night. Like, it's hard, that's why, like, I printed out an agenda, because it's like, trying to find it all in the, yeah. It's like reading through the, you know, hey.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, you know, we typically go in order, so it's not a huge deal. But then, you know, you're looking for your agenda, or at least, you know, I am, 'cause I'm trying to stay on task, but...
We're meeting again tomorrow night?
Yes.
At six?
Yes. Yes, that's good, sure, I appreciate that, thanks, Nicole.
Scott, did you bring your proposed contract?
Yes.
Do you know how to use the copy machine?
Yeah.
Who needs a copy of Scott's contract?
If it's the last one you sent, I, I made a copy, I'm good.
And it's in your packet, Bill, do you want it?
Yes, please, if you don't mind.
Can you make copies?
How many?
Three. I forgot to make copies, I sent it digitally, but I forgot how to make them. Can you guys sit up front for the microphones?
More guns.
Slag shots.
More guns?
Madam Chair, thank you for having us in.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, I appreciate you putting this together, so we can kind of walk through.
This is good, and I, I, well, I wanna thank you for all the work that you have been doing on this. But I also wanna say, can we meet earlier next year?
Yeah.
Please, 'cause I'm having, like, anxiety over town meeting being in three weeks.
Yeah.
And we're just sitting down for the first time.
Yeah.
Essentially, together to go through this.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it would be a huge goal to work on, maybe meeting at least in the-
Yeah, yeah. So, one of the things that was really holding us up was the school.
Yeah.
And we had an opportunity to meet with the school, my friend and I actually did. We had a very, very productive meeting with them. I have to say that they were very open and transparent. We spent, what, almost two hours, three hours? Went through the entire process with them. Really got a good understanding of what they have to go through, what their budget process is all about. Did a lot of listening, asked a lot of questions. We presented a bunch of questions in advance, they provided all the information for us. We were pretty happy with, with that.
Yeah.
And-
Quite surprised.
Look forward to working with them going forward.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Real happy with it. And they came in with what we needed.
Yeah, which is excellent.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It was painful. Oh, yeah.
It was painful.
It is, and it typically is, it's just always, it's a big budget. And they've got a big job to put that budget together, and I get it, just, you know.
Well, we got a big job.
We're a little town, yeah, right.
For the rest of the budget.
And we don't wanna, right, we don't wanna have to, you know, really cut our services.
So I think we're, I think we're there, with, there's a couple of items that are open for discussion tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Did you all, did you get, did you send the balance sheet? All right, so, based on, based on the balance sheet, we're, we're coming up with a twenty-three thousand dollar, actually, a little bit less than that, an eight thousand dollar difference that we have to put in. So it's gonna be about fifteen thousand dollars surplus. So we can balance this budget with articles for stabilization, capital stabilization, snow and ice, unpaid bills. Okay? The difference that we have right now, though, is there's a, we have a fifty thousand dollar budget discrepancy between what we're recommending and what, let's call it, the Board of Selectmen have on their budgets. Now, we have fully funded schools, fire, police, highway. Based on everyone's, everyone's pleasure request, we have done that. Okay? The two items that are open for discussion, town clerk, it's definitely one that, we absolutely understand where Ryan's coming from, we agree with what he's, what he's asking for. We just don't know how to fund it. And then there's, Mark, you wanna go through the, kind of the delta that we're coming up with?
That delta is IT services, six thousand dollars. All board expenses, six thousand dollars. Administrative, administrator salary, eight thousand dollars. And town clerk of thirty-one thousand. That's a total of fifty-one thousand, so it's just four items that we, we don't have. Full agreement with the numbers that the board has sent over to us. So, is there a line item you want us to refer to, or?
Do we just go through it? I hate to be whatever, but-
Yeah, no, all board's expenses.
Start at the top and just work our way-
Those are the four items. I mean, those are the, those are the items we have discrepancies with, that we have to narrow out upon. We have some ideas, we have some thoughts, we have some comments. But that's where we gotta bisque them up with fifty grand.
Yeah, I don't know.
Question, on the IT services, what exactly is that? Providing you, like, remote login, taking care of your stuff?
All of that, so our IT provider is offsite, so they are remote, or they come in. It's our emails, it's software, it's equipment, our finance, all the, they are everything that we have that is computer-related, or, you know, information technology-related, is in that line item.
And that's a fifty thousand dollar request by the select, by the select board?
We just don't understand the increase.
And it was thirty-six last year, but we're over that budget already, Nicole?
Who had it? You had, you had the, can I see your packet? I sent them all of the line items.
Oh, we have those?
And you had the, you know, the rest of the things I sent them.
Oh, that's- They really did?
I think they're over by, some of them are like fourteen. And to be honest, you know, the way that the town builds their budget isn't the way that the new finance committee does, right? So this is the little bible that the town has used, that Jen is most comfortable with.
Right.
And, so, oh, thanks. So we funded, you know, we funded everything the way that we thought was appropriate, with still being under two and a half, you saw that. So, they took all of the revenue and then dispersed it out. I didn't take any free cash, or, you know, I just used our, our tax money and our state money. So, you know, there, there's fifty thousand dollar difference, because, you know, they're, they have, oh, thanks, they have more than what we have in free cash being allocated to articles. So they're taking some of the operating budget money and putting it toward the articles. So that's where that difference is, right?
Well, we just, there's a fifty thousand dollar difference in the budget, that's where, that's where it is.
Right, because again, I don't have any, I don't have the articles in here.
Well, the fifty thousand has nothing to do with the articles.
So, oh, I see what you mean, so, I see, okay, so the fifty thousand dollar difference, sorry, you're right, is what he's taken out. He took nine thousand dollars out of town administrator. He wants to take the rest out of IT, you know, back to thirty-six.
Right, right, that I can see in here, okay.
So that's what you wanna talk about, those are the decisions that you guys have to make.
Actually, the thirty-six thousand dollars, we won't be, we did the forty-four, because you took eight thousand out of the account of software contract?
And put it into the-
Right, right, so that would, that would give you forty-four.
But if we're already fourteen over this year-
That's the six.
We have to recognize that and figure out why.
That's it, we're over by about fourteen right now.
Kelly, understand, we need to understand why you're over this year.
That's what, I'm asking the same question, no, I'm asking the same question.
When we get a good answer as to why you're over and why you have to spend it, then maybe we'll budget one extra, maybe we had some extraordinary items this year that caused you to go over.
Right.
Or, you know, who's controlling that budget? Who controls IT spend? Who's watching that? Nicole?
I'm watching it, I watch every budget, every day.
So why are you over 6,000, why are we over by $6,000?
We're over by 13,700.
So why are we over?
Again, and I said it, I said it to them earlier, it's because we consistently underfund line items, and they're going over, we, there's nothing on here that's extraordinary. There, it's all, everything's going to CM Geeks, who is our IT, Perigis, who is our email, and Zoom, which was 900. That's, it's, it's all, everything here is because of...
What did we spend last year?
I don't have that.
Okay, if we knew what we spent last year?
Yeah, that would help.
And what we spent this year, and why we were over, we all want to know the difference, is it the $6,000 difference? Give me the $6,000, then we can make a decision, I don't have that.
I don't have that right now either, I could have gotten it earlier, but...
Well, those are, those are simple questions that need, that need answering. The all boards expense, $6,000, same thing, why are we over, you know, why are we overspending on all boards? Is somebody watching that, who watches that? How are we controlling that? Those are simple things that we can control as a town. You know?
Yeah, I mean, we can... It's $6,000, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's it, $500 a month.
We have, our budget, our operating budget is, you look at the components that make up our operating budget. Our operating budget for, for the town is $2.6 million. Now that excludes school, post-congy retirement, debt service and benefit, and insurance costs. That's all we're managing here, is $2.6 million, $6,000 and 2.6 is a big number. Okay? So that's why we need to, we need to understand, we just, we, we're okay with if it's a legitimate increase, but again, how are we going to fund it?
The, the discussion that, that we had, and this is kind of an interesting perspective, that I can see the board's taking, our board's taking. We have $130,000 for, for fire, $843,000 for police, $586, or $56, $586,000 for highway, and, and in the Finance Department, $316,000, we're funding it fully. Competent managers of all four of those departments, they should manage their budget. That's, if, if it includes those expenses that are called all other expenses, those people should be responsible for controlling that part of the budget. So we're talking about something that's fully funded, and we had a percent, was it 71%? 70% of the budget is in the hands of people that are being paid quite a, a fairly good amount of money to manage their own departments. They don't need help managing the departments, it's these other things that are killing us.
So if you look at IT, all boards, that's every department, every department uses that. And I will say, yes, the police, they have big budgets, they, they, they go into deficits on certain line items and go and fund them with different line items, I mean, it's the way that it is. And I believe that with the way that we had done it, Kelly, I know you have gone through this, that we were able to comfortably put money into these line items to be able to, you know, just have our government services adequate, and not always, you know, I know that there was a time when people would bring their own pens from home, because there was no money to put, to fund it.
We're not in that situation right now. We've had two reserve fund transfer requests this year, that's it. If we were overspending every single budget, as you say, we'd have a line outside of our door doing reserve fund transfers, we don't.
Yeah, but two for the year?
Two for the year. So, I feel that we have, that the budgets that we had last year are fully funded. There's been some increases that we, we took into account this year, police was one of them. Highway was another, adding a superintendent. We, we were able to comfortably do that with this budget process. The only difference we have right now are those four line items that we, we're, we don't have a way to fund it.
And I think it's absolutely fine if you level fund all of the services. The IT, the, what are the other three, besides the administrator, that's going to be a conversation, but what are the other ones, IT, all board?
IT, all boards, all boards expenses, administrator and Town Clerk that holds $51,000.
Okay, so Town Clerk and Town Administrator, there's absolutely nothing wrong with level funding those, all boards and IT.
So is the IT like a set contract for the year, or as services are used? So they say, this year's going to be 50, and then?
No, we have, we have a three-year contract, but then they do other, they do...
If they do a bubble beyond with the...
Anything, if anyone goes down, if anyone breaks the computer die, you know, it's, it's all that.
If they have to go beyond, then there's extra charges.
Are we using an unusually antiquated system that requires that much maintenance, or is that normal?
No, and, you know, definitely one of the reasons is because we upgraded our software to merge, so all the departments can talk, because they couldn't before. So they were, they were walking hand in hand with paper, and it was just, there was too many mistakes.
And this is the first year we've, with the coordinating?
This is the first full year that we've had that system.
But is that a recurring, will that be recurring?
It's recurring.
So it's like a subscription fee for the software, or?
Yeah. We, again, we pay Vadar, which is our software company, and...
Based on the amount of seats that are, right?
Yep, exactly.
But if we level fund it, we're going to be, we're going to be in the same...
Well, I have a question, or, I have a question, but just put up there for an idea. Would the town be open to volunteer services on IT? Like, we put it out to the community, I actually know an IT guy who's a, a professional, like, top-notch, found a person, and would volunteer his services. So, you could level fund it, and then the six grand in other services and stuff like that. And he could come in and work with Nicole and go over all your systems and, and tell you how you're getting your bang for your buck, can look at these contracts and tell you. Jeff, I mean, this is Jeff's wheelhouse, I can show you his resume, everything, I mean...
Well, I mean, we have one more here with this company, so there's no way of getting rid of them, but if you wanted somebody to come in and do it over again?
I'm just saying, on the $6,000 part, that you are having trouble funding.
The $6,000 is, 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 what we're trying to understand is, what did we spend last year? What have we contracted for this year, and why is there a difference? We don't know what that answer is, right? So if we're going to get that analysis done, and it says, hey, literally, it's going to be a $6,000 increase, then we're able to make that change, but right now, we don't know what that is. And once we know what that is, then we can figure out whether we're funding it appropriately or not funding it appropriately.
Just making a suggestion.
And, yeah, using...
Use a local people in town that's an expert in this field.
If you had somebody that could look at what contracts we have in place, and what sort of services we're using, it might, might help. IT is one of those magical things that just have...
But the retained services are at a fixed fee, it's the excess service. So maybe that's, that's where this suggestion here is going to help. I mean, we just have to nibble away at...
Right, I'm just saying, if we level fund it, and put the six grand aside, you know, ask them if they're volunteer services.
Did we level fund it from last year, or was it just?
We had, I think the original was, the original ass was 36.
So, IT, FY '23 budget was 34. Then '24 was 36.
Okay, so we are level funding, yeah.
Yeah.
But if we have a three-year contract, and it was 36 last year, then why are we going?
Because we're over, like, for whatever reason, we're over by almost 14,000 this year.
Well, let's, if we can get an idea of what that is, I think that would help.
I can get you that answer tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great.
So essentially, it was over, it was over service, additional services for whatever needs.
Yeah, that covered in the original, yeah.
Yeah, the, the $1,500 on the Selectmen salaries, I'm good with foregoing, I'm fine with your recommendation.
Did we get a cut again?
I don't, well, no, just stay the same.
We'll level fund you, Erin.
Thanks.
There was a formula in there for like $100 a meeting, per every meeting, it came to $7,200, and instead it's $5,700 between the three of us, whatever.
I understand, I understand.
I'm not going to argue about that. The Town Administrator salary, though, that is going to be negotiable at some point, when we make a decision, tomorrow or next day, soon.
We, we certainly have some, some questions on this.
It's why we, you know, went with the 90, to give us room to negotiate. I feel like we have, we have to find that, so that we can negotiate properly.
So, you're going to hire a $90,000 person with an assistant of $20,000 something thousand to manage a $2.6 million budget, of which 71% of that budget is being managed by competent managers?
So it's just the budget they work on?
The town, the town runs...
No, it's not, it's everyday, day-to-day stuff, it's personnel, it's HR. It's a position that has certainly come a long way in the past decade.
Okay.
And to go without it?
We're not saying go without it.
Who's doing the work?
We're not saying go without it, but we're having, we're having a hard time swallowing $111,000 to fund two positions to manage a $2.6 million town of, how many employees do we have?
I don't know, I have to stop the topic, I definitely have.
Yeah, probably. So, it, it's over, it's over 4% of the budget, so you're going to spend 4% of your budget to manage 30% of?
For a competent person to come in and, and maybe write grants for us and get us money, absolutely. Because that's what we're really focusing on, which is for...
So, one of our, one of our ideas or recommendations would be, take the assistant salary and give it to Ryan.
You know, I came up with an idea like this, and then I went to Ryan, and he wasn't agreeable. Have you talked to Ryan about this?
No, we just, we just talked in the book today.
He's very not agreeable to...
To, for what?
To doing more work, or having to pick up any of that.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying doing more work. I'm saying if you want to fund his, you want to fund his increase to $31,000, you can give him $20,000 of that by eliminating the assistant.
You could also fund Ryan, cut him in half, and just say, okay, this year, you're, we're going to fund you for an additional eight hours a week versus 16. And, and he's fine with that as well, he just needs to know what we're going to fund him at, and he'll work accordingly.
Yeah.
So that's an option.
Yeah.
We, we talked about that.
Okay, I don't think, just, it's not like the end of, you know, this, we're going to give him 31, or whatever the number is.
We're thinking, you take the assistant salary, like 21 grand, you fund that for, for Ryan.
Been here, I've been here a long time, and not having that position was not a good thing.
We're not saying to go without it, we're saying to go with a different role. Spend $90,000 for managing an operation that's $2.6 million, seems a little excessive to us.
Well, I can assure you that I work well over the hours that we are open, and there is no way I would be sitting on a chair if there was no assistant there, no way.
And that was, that was your role, and that's what you needed. Going forward, we don't, we don't see, we don't see how you can, how one can afford to have an assistant, and why you would need an assistant. I was...
Nobody has asked me what we do on a day-to-day basis, never once.
When I worked, when I was on another board, another town, we had a transition of our Town Administrator. It was a $20 million budget, we had our own school system, K through 12. We hired a part-time guy who did more in half the time than we did when we had our full-time. The idea is, is we have 90, we're going to spend $90,000 to fund a position for a $2.6 million budget. I just don't know how we get there.
Honestly, the smaller the town, the more responsibility the Town Administrator has.
I think the observation we made, look, this is just an observation. You've got, you've got a police department that have two very competently paid managerial positions. You have a highway department, in fact, some of these salaries are greater than $90,000.
We're talking police chief salary?
Police chief salary, and the highway surveying, all, all we're saying is, they should be competent enough to manage their part of the business down to the penny.
They do the money, ask them right now what I do for them. I do work for the police and the highway.
Well, I'm sure you do, but maybe they should be more responsible at doing this, that's what we're saying.
Confidentiality stuff that not everybody's supposed to be privy to, and I've literally worked with the highway and the police today on two issues. So it's not, just because they're running their budget, that's not what's running the town.
We're, we're not discounting the value added to the town, Nicole. What we're saying is we have an opportunity with your departure to look at what the role should be going forward. And when we're looking at a, a, a position that makes up 4% of the budget, 4% of the operating budget of this town, do we, do we have an opportunity to look at it differently, okay? Do we look at, what's a person we bring in, what sort of things should we, should that person be doing, over and above what you were doing and not doing? And putting some of that accountability back to a very competent team that we have here. We're lucky to have the people we have. We're lucky to have Marty, and we're lucky to have, yeah, all, all the people we have in those positions. So, do we look at, how do we continue to manage our budget in a way that we're able to grow stabilization, we're going to be able to, to support these departments, like we did this year? We've supported everyone's request, okay? We have an opportunity to maybe do things a little, think outside the box a little bit, how do we do that?
And that's our role, is to give you some different perspectives, and ultimately, the decision's yours. But we're back to the balance sheet, which is, you know, which is...
I got a quick question, just looking at the numbers, so on the police chief, and, and I'm just looking at these numbers, it's $618,000 for their entire department, and their two salaries are roughly $190,000 for the two managerial positions, that's 30% of their budget. So what's left, as far as like out of the operating fund of $2.6 million, take away that 70%, so how much are you in control of, money-wise? And we can do a ratio of management, like, just looking at numbers. Their number's 30%, and I'm only looking at it because it's written from it. And I haven't had time to go through this at all, just, you know. But it is a key position, I mean, our town has to comply with regulations, municipal law, Mass General law, all these things, and the USDA bought a treatment facility with Scott. There's reporting, all the stuff on the grants, it's not like, hey, I, I come in here and have a cup of coffee, and I relax, and I send a couple of emails, you know, I mean, it's, it's a lot more than that. I don't know exactly what it is, because I'm new to this position, and I've only worked with Nicole for a little bit. Just, I'm just saying, it's, it's an important position. But I, I can analyze, you know, I can look at numbers, I can talk with you, and we can kick around ideas, and this whole board can, you know, we'll work out a solution, we'll come up with something.
We don't have a whole lot of time to do that.
Well, unfortunately, we don't.
That's the problem, and that's why I, I can't stress enough that we cannot be doing this in May next year, we just can't, because I don't know when we're going to figure this out now, between now and town meeting. I, I just, I, I don't, I don't know how to fund Ryan's position. That was, that was new, to even seeing that, I didn't know that he was looking to go full-time, because, like, this is the first week we've seen this budget, we haven't even seen a draft along the way, you guys.
I think I'm going to follow along, so...
We've been under the assumption that those, that those were your...
Yeah. So, if this, if this is the first time you've seen it, then...
Anything you've sent to me, I've sent to them.
Okay, I've been sending you my budgets all along, so...
Anytime you sent them to me, I sent them to them.
And they've had them.
They didn't look like this, right, they're your...
Well, this is the proper way to look at the town. If in the balance sheet, we have to look at the, the inflows and the outflows, and how things are going to balance out. So, as we did, we've been working on this since December of last year. Okay?
And I know you've been working hard your whole board.
Yes.
You've been, you've showed up.
And this is our. You thank you for that, because I know you've put a lot of hours into doing this.
And this is our first year without the benefit of ARPA.
Okay.
We spent a lot, we spent a lot of our ARPA money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it made, it kind of glossed over the real problem.
Yeah.
Absolutely, it did.
So if we get back to the balance sheet, other than the fifty-thousand-dollar budget difference that we have between the Board of Selectmen and FinCom, we have some articles that we need funded, so we're requesting reserve account transfer, FinCom reserve, thirty-five thousand dollars. We're requesting, we know that is, we know that unpaid bills is twelve thousand dollars. So we have prior-year bills of twelve thousand, one-fifty-seven, Snow and Ice of seventy-eight, oh-twenty, reserve account, thirty-five thousand, stabilization, stabilization account of fifty, and capital stabilization of twenty-five.
Where's all this coming from?
Well, it comes from free cash, the budget, the difference in, the budget difference, and new growth. That's how you fund it.
So what do we have in free cash in this?
One-eighteen.
Two-hundred, yeah, you, you have that there.
So when you say the difference in the budget, you mean the fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand, yeah.
Which one, what do you do?
Just the, what we have in everything.
I have it on my wall, but it's mine. I thought I had it. Because I, you know, I was just thinking, I mean, it could go the same way. If you had fifty thousand in reserve and you only spent less than ten, then why do you need thirty-five this year?
I want fifty, because that's going to ensure that we have free cash from this year.
Well, and that's what we do with accounts when we maybe over-budget them. We expect to have money at the end of the year, isn't it?
We have plenty of money in our reserve account to make sure that if anything catastrophic happened, then of course, we have fifty thousand dollars we can fund. So we're only asking for thirty-five, and the balance goes into the reserve accounts.
And free cash, some of that free cash went into the police.
Yeah, we spent forty-five thousand dollars for a police cruiser.
Which was not in the.
Which we weren't, none of us were anticipating. We wanted to have that go through, through financing, but because of the grant and everything else, we had to do that, which is fine. But that, that took forty-five thousand dollars out of our equation this year.
Which is about equal to the fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, it would have been, we would, we balanced this thing back in January. We was like, good, we're, we're good, we know what we're going to do. And then this thing came up, and then we had police, and we had some fire, I mean, we had highway that we had to deal with. So all of a sudden, we started to.
When we look at it, it's, it's, it's not that big of a vibe between us. The problem was that the free cash kind of threw us into a bit of a tizzy.
Yeah.
In our first year without ARPA.
We never funded the budget with ARPA, though. We just bought capital with ARPA.
You funded Snow and Ice with, you funded Snow and Ice with.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sure we did that.
And there's some ARPA left, right?
We were told not much, very little is in our.
I think there's probably about three, maybe forty thousand.
Can we get a firm number on that? Because that's a pretty big number.
That should go, that should.
It's going to get spent by the end of the year.
Well, we have to, we have to spend it.
You have to allocate it.
When we have to spend it.
December of twenty-five. There's.
Put it into the roof?
Yeah.
Put it in the roof.
I will talk to Lori. It was a very difficult transition when we lost Markham, and we had no accountant for a while. And so there was, they weren't reporting, or they weren't keeping track of it.
So you're saying there's forty in, in ARPA right now? Because we were told.
There's about fifty. But we have, we have one more year of our website that we're funding through ARPA. That was purchased through ARPA for three years.
So let's see what that number is.
Yeah, we can't, that cannot be used for funding any, any operating budgets.
No, but it'd be good to know what that number is.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll email Lori and ask her.
That should go to fund capital, and then.
We could have used that to run the, the police cruiser. Could have, yeah.
And we'd have free cash, we would be.
Yeah, we wouldn't have discussed. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be here talking right now.
Why they moved then is that these are the things that we have, we need to know.
I did ask a question about the ARPA funds. You know, I wasn't on the board at the time, I was just servicing the audience, as far as what the standing was on it.
What was your understanding?
Well, I wanted to know if it was completely allocated, because if it wasn't, we could use it.
Right.
And I was told.
The last week.
That's what we, that's what we thought, but we were told it was gone.
Last week she was still working.
Any brand ideas?
I just asked about ARPA. Thought that was all right. Yeah, it's pretty good. And I'll try to pull another rabbit. Mostly I have to listen, because this, I can't find my way through this stuff. Complete stupidity. But ARPA, did you say you had something bad from Lori?
No, she's working on it. She was working on it last week. She was, had to go back to Markham, back to the old files, make sure everything's accounted for. She does the reporting. I just ask the accountant what's in there. So.
And we don't have anything hanging from FEMA, from all that COVID stuff.
No, that's all closed out. Yep.
Well.
I don't even know. I don't even know.
No. Well, the answer might be in the ARPA number, at least for your board to make a decision. We are, we're fifty thousand dollars off. Yeah. I mean, thirty of it is Ryan.
Yeah.
Question's Ryan, I'm behind on that.
He wants to go full-time. So he's proposing to go from thirty.
So up that fifty, thirty-one K is Ryan. Okay.
Yeah.
Are you, are you going to need the, the assistant to the administrator? If you hire, if you hire a competent person, Kelly, do you think they're going to need an assistant?
Yes, I do.
I don't see it. I don't know how you can even.
We, we transitioned from not having one for years.
Yeah.
And it was necessary. We fought for that so hard.
For an administrator or for an assistant?
Yes. The, the, you know, the tedious things, the, the meeting minutes, the, you know, things like that, that get, we fall behind on them, as, as we all know. Those things, those are the things that, you know, that that, you know, those really secretarial things is what that person does.
The two finalists are coming tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
Tomorrow night. And if you want to come listen to the question, abilities.
We're, we're listening, we're not offering, we're not allowing questions from the audience. I will just, I will preface that right now.
Is anyone going to be, I can attend.
Glenn will be here, yeah. He's part of the, the committee.
Well, you gotta, you're going to have to find, we're going to find fifty grand somewhere, or twenty grand somewhere. So.
And sixty, that was the IT?
Well, no, that, that, we've already said we would level fund those.
Yes, it's twelve grand right there. All boards in IT is twelve grand.
It's twenty. Difference of, oh, no, because the eight had to go back in, right? So that's really forty-four?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And a decision on Ryan's.
Yeah. Yeah, even if you go halfway, yeah, how do you fund it, huh?
Well, I guess, I guess you depend on what ARPA's money is.
We can go from that.
Can make any.
Well, ARPA can, can use that.
Yeah, use that.
Use that.
Yeah, how can you fund anything with ARPA at this point? Through the budgeting process.
Next year, you're going to be even that deeper in that.
Yeah, you're just kicking a can down the road.
Right. I mean, if we know we have it, like you said, we can use it for the roof or something. We know that it's, you know. But it, I don't think that we can offset our, our operating budget.
Yes. Using it on a roof, and the roof's going to be less than that, so perfect. Then take another one.
Right.
And then use that. And then we just, we're already replenishing that capital.
So that's the difference, is that, you know, historically, you funded the budget and not the capital, and that's what they're changing. So that's what's changing.
Not changing anything. You have the fifty thousand dollar delta, that's what we're talking about.
Yes, but in the past, we have foregone.
Putting any capitalization.
Funding, capital, or even, even stabilization.
But that has no, that has no impact on the budget. Zero.
I'm going to, I'm going to disagree, and that's fine.
Yeah, because you're taking the.
Show me the difference, show me where.
Right.
You're using for the budget.
Show me in the budget where that capital is coming out.
It's not. It's a reserve of growth.
It, it, it says, it's, it has no impact on the budget whatsoever. We have a budget. You guys have come up with a number, we've come up with a number with fifty thousand dollars delta. Capital's not in there.
You're using free cash, new growth, right?
Funding, the, funding has no, has no bearing on the budget. Where the funds come from is irrelevant to the budget.
Not in, not the way that Hardwick is always under budget. They're using the new growth for the operating budget.
You're not understanding.
Then where are you funding those articles from? If you're not, if you're not using new growth.
The balance sheet explains how the, where the funding's coming from.
I know, but you lump it all together, and here, they take the two and a half, they take the taxation and the state funds.
You guys, your budget, Nicole, is six million, five-seventy-nine. My budget is six million, five-twenty. My sheet's five-twenty-eight. So it's fifty thousand dollars delta. That's what we're talking about.
I'm, I'm definitely not following it, because the formula that is used here has always been local receipts, raise and appropriate, that's appropriate, that's what you get to use for, to, to build your budget.
And that's fine. You can, how you fund your, how you fund the budget is one thing, but actual budget, the expense, is something different.
What do you have, I don't know if you called it a delta, what do you have that's under two and a half? Fifty-eight?
Well, we have to.
I don't have your paper. I didn't print one out for myself.
We have four lines.
Your line?
Yeah, no, no, I meant the bottom line.
But what are you over or under? What are you under two and a half by?
Uh, fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, this isn't getting resolved tonight, now is it? So I'm going to propose that we need to meet the week before the town meeting.
That's fine.
Because this is not getting resolved, and Scott's waiting, no one to executive session, and it's almost eight o'clock, so.
What do we need for that next meeting?
A miracle?
I think it is, it is easy solutions here. We just have to, we have to, we have to agree.
We just don't agree on it. That's the problem. So we don't agree on it.
Right.
Is, so there's something else has to change. Hey, something else is going to have to be figured out on where to come up with that money from. I don't know what else to do. Wednesday, June fifth? Do we have a personnel meeting that day anyway?
You can be.
We could just ride it out, or we could go home and eat something and come back.
Wednesday, June fifth. I can do June fifth.
Can we do early? Can we do five?
I can do five.
Five? Well, we're here at four, right? So we can just stick around, and it will be just for the budget. You know, I mean, if something little pops up, we can add it, but let's just concentrate on figuring out the budget.
Okay.
I'm going to post both.
Yeah. I, I already posted the personnel committee meeting. And someone from FinCom is going to come to that. You responded.
What's that?
To the personnel committee.
What is that?
Is that June fifth as well?
Yeah, that's the one at four o'clock.
Okay.
You did respond to me.
Yeah, I was, I've been away for two weeks.
No, I know. Um, because a member of the FinCom is on the personnel, but no one, not ever, like, has been coming, so.
Oh, all right, yeah.
That's why I put it up to you.
Yeah. All right, so you want to do five o'clock?
That'd be great, because then we can just roll out, you know, we'll do an hour of personnel, and then.
So the personnel's at four, and then the selectmen meeting at?
Correct.
All right, and then.
Fifth of June, Wednesday.
And what's the personnel meeting about?
It's just, we still have, we're ironing out a few of the policies within the handbook. And reviews, process of reviews for departments, that's.
Free.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like, yeah, like departments, right. Performance reviews, thank you.
That's at four o'clock.
Correct. Yeah, as well, yeah.
Okay.
Now, Chris, would you mind sending like a Nicole an email explaining your whole end of it, as far as your delta number, and how you have funded these reserves accounts, and where's this money coming from?
It's all in this package.
I don't have the balance sheet, so.
Oh.
Okay, was that today?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can, I can walk you through how it all works, and maybe more to, to allow you guys, and explain to us how it, how it works.
Okay.
And you can see, you know, how we fund it. But the budget expense and the funding, they're two separate, they're apples and oranges.
Okay.
So we're going to spend X amount of money. We have to fund that money, and that comes in through raise and appropriate, free cash, other sources. That's how we balance it, so that's what the balance sheet's for, unions and the else.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then in that packet, you show your free cash, what we use, you know.
Yeah, it's all, it's all in here.
Where it all comes from, and then all the department.
Yeah, that's the one, so that's the one that gets handed out, like, that's the one that the town has always used, and it's what gets handed out to the public, because that's what they're familiar seeing.
Yeah, so all that details behind, that, that builds the budget all the way up.
Yeah.
So you can kind of look at the summary of like what's police, what's fire, what's selectmen, because it rolls them up into.
And you have like, like the cherry seeds from the state?
Yeah.
How much money they're going to give you, and stuff like that.
All the, all the links to the, to the, those, on those tabs, there's a link to what the, to where it is on the state. You can click that and go right to it.
I would suggest that if you want the more detail, to reach directly out to Chris.
Okay.
I do want to get Scott going.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'm just not here.
It's just, it's getting late. Thank you, guys, I do know that you put forth. I'm not supposed to say guys, I know. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Ladies.
Thanks, Scott, for. This is our license.
Yep, I will take a roll call to go into the executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. If German they are from, we will not be going back into open session. William Tinker.
William Tinker, aye.
Eric Ballheim.
Eric Ballheim, aye.
Kelly Kemp, aye.